Welcome to the Herndon Town Council, July 10, 2018, public session.
Welcome, I'll call the meeting to order if you can all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, a couple of announcements, as you can see, as the Vice Mayor, I'll be chairing the meeting tonight since the Mayor is out of town. And I also wanted to note that a general item has been added, and it's listed on tonight's agenda, which is to appoint a member of council. Also want to just welcome a few of the members of Boy Scout Troop 697 who are here to earn one of their badges. So, thank you for being here. Next up is the approval of minutes, we have just one on set this evening, is there a motion to approve the June 12th public hearing minutes?
I'll second.
Okay. Ms. Olem, seconded by Councilmember McKenna, is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And that passes. Five, zero, okay. So, first up, we have our presentations, and our first presentation tonight is a proclamation to recognize the 35th Annual National Night Out, and I have the honor of reading the proclamation tonight. So, a Town of Herndon proclamation recognizing National Night Out, August 7, 2018. First celebrated in August 7, 1984, National Night Out is a unique crime and drug prevention event sponsored by the National Association of Town Watch. Over the past 35 years, National Night Out has grown into a massive multinational community building campaign that involves over 38 million people and over 16,000 communities from all 50 states. Also, US territories, Canadian cities, military bases worldwide. The Town of Herndon supports the Herndon Police Department and local anti-crime programs in their efforts to heighten crime awareness and prevention, promote community police partnerships, and strengthen community spirit, energy, and determination, helping to make our neighborhoods safer, better places to live. By celebrating National Night Out, and in cooperation with efforts such as Neighborhood Fleet and Business Watch, the Herndon community sends a message to criminals that our neighborhoods are organized and fighting back against crime. Therefore, the Mayor and Town Council of the Town of Herndon, Virginia hereby proclaim August 7, 2018, as the 35th Annual National Night Out in the Town of Herndon, and encourage all neighborhoods and businesses to join the Herndon Police Department and the Herndon community as we unite, celebrate, and promote National Night Out throughout the town. So, I'll start with some comments on this, since I had the honor of reading this proclamation. I have said this many times, and welcome to our HPD in the audience tonight, that National Night Out is really one of my favorite nights of being a council member. You get to be in a cop car, and it's a good thing, and ride around town, but it's also, it's, I feel like our police force and Chief de Board's leadership really collaborated and focused on community before it was cool, right? That community policing, which you hear so much, we've been doing that for years, and it shows in terms of how our citizens respond to our police, right? And it's a great opportunity that night and other opportunities that our police department encourages and looks for other opportunities to find ways to work with the community, not just in times of trouble, right? So that they have that, their familiar face in the neighborhoods throughout, not just when they are called on and are in need of their services. So, with that, other comments of council? Mr. McKenna?
Yeah, this is a wonderful event that the Herndon Police do a great job with. I believe they start, when it originally started, it was called Take Back the Night, and I was actually a part of it back in 1998, when I had hair and I was a little bit in better shape. But, the thing that's great about this, especially in Herndon, I'm a big fan of Mr. Rogers, and you see some reiterations of Mr. Rogers, day in and day out now because of the documentary and things that are going on. It's a great way to reach out to neighborhoods and identify with people that might not be like you, but have the same passion and conviction about things. And I think it's important that we recognize that, and I think the police in this town do an amazing job with that, and we're very lucky to have them. So, I look forward to the festivities this year, and thank you very much for everything you do.
Other comments? Ms. Cunningham?
Echoing my fellow council members, this is a really wonderful night for the entire community. If your neighbor hasn't hosted a National Night Out, get in line for next year, it's a great way for you to meet your neighbors, to meet your friendly neighborhood police officers, and to really get to know the people who are putting their lives on the line for you every day here in Herndon, because they love this community as much as we love them. Thank you.
Other comments? Ms. Friedrichs?
So, I attended my first National Night Out last year, and it was a great experience. I went to places I had not been in Herndon, which was another wonderful thing. I have talked to a number of people outside of the town about their police forces, none of them have the same feeling that we get. I mean Fairfax County has an amazing police force, but our police officers reach out to the kids of our community so that they know who to go to when they're in trouble and when they need help. That's something that's really important and that we don't see in a lot of other places. Our police force is aware of how to treat people with autism. Our police force is incredibly well-trained, very thoughtful, and National Night Out is a wonderful time to just hang out with them and get to know them a little better. Thanks.
Any other comments? Ms. Olem?
Thank you. I've been enjoying National Night Out for quite a few years. Back in 1994, my husband's airplane had disappeared in South America, and, I don't know, something was going on, and I chatted with one of the officers in town, and I introduced myself. "Ms. Olem, we know who you are, are you doing alright?" Our officers are awesome. And then years later, when my youngest son was playing football, he had a couple of our HPD officers that were his coaches. And Matt is 26 now, but as he got older, and I would run into the coaches, HPD officers around town, they would always stop and ask me how Matt was doing, and tell me stories about when they coached him. So, our officers are just, they know about community policing, and they have for so long. And when people tell me that, gee, we pay double taxes in Herndon, which we don't really, but I tell them, "You can deduct that, and you're not going to get what you get outside of the town, because we really do have awesome services, and thank you to HPD for all you do."
Thank you. So, with that, I would love to recognize Senior Police Officer Denise Randles to come up and talk to us a little more about National Night Out. And I see Steve Thompson's here, too. My fellow dancing partners from Dancing with the Services. The gang's back together, let's do it.
Thank you, for supporting our National Night Out event in the Town of Herndon, and thank you for the very kind words about our police department. I know if the Chief of Police was here, she would greatly appreciate it. So, ladies and gentlemen, yes, National Night Out is August 7 of this year. We have 14 communities that are participating this year, and I would like to mention them right now. So, it's the Herndon Harbor House, Whirlgate Condos, Stewart Woods Apartments, Villages of Herndon Mills, Madison Forest, Dominion Ridge, Broad Oaks Community, Hunter's Creek, Runnymede Manor, Crestview Townhomes, Herndon Optimist Club, Calhoun Court, Four Seasons, and Burke Dale Apartments. So, I also want to recognize the coordinators for each of those communities, because I know how much work goes into planning those events. So, thank you, coordinators. And, yeah, so, thank you, we look forward to it, and, yeah, it's a big event here, so...
It is. We'll see you that night.
Yes, thank you.
Lieutenant Thompson, any comments you wanted to make? Do you want to add to it? You're welcome to add.
Well, I've just taken over for Mike Berg in his position, I don't know if I can actually replace him, but I have at least taken over the position for now, and now I have crime prevention under my supervision, so I'm very excited about it, I'm excited about National Night Out, and a lot of things we get to do out of the Crime Prevention Office, and as you said, getting involved with the community, and the children, and all the people we love in this town. So, thank you.
Excellent. We do look forward to it. So, with that, let's, I'd like to invite all the members of council, Town Manager, Town Attorney down forward, I think I saw Captain Anzengruber here, any other members of HPD? Is Guy Masters here, or anyone from our HPCST, our Herndon Police? I totally know what this stands for.
No, they're not here.
Our core support team, okay, there you go.
Yes, I brought the t-shirts.
And some bracelets.
Can we move this way? Let's go to the right.
Next up is a presentation assert, or certificate of congratulations for the outgoing members
Brad, go this way. Go this way. Yeah. And then look this way. Okay, you pull those glasses.
She gets to be in the picture.
of the Herndon Youth Advisory Council, which is chaired by Councilmember McKenna, so I'll
Yay!
call on him for comments.
Well, thank you very much, I'll keep this short and sweet. The, just want to let everyone know, the stated purpose of the Herndon Youth Advisory Council is to advise, is to advise the elected body on activities, issues, and decisions relevant to you and the advocate and legislation addressing issues that impact the lives of Herndon's young people. Translated, that means, we have 12 amazing kids that get together once a month to talk about the issues that affect the town, and affect them on a personal level. I first want to thank the diocese, the council, for the passing resolution last year, and for staff for working hard to make sure that the language was adequate and making sure we can move forward. Our first meeting ever was in December, and it was on the sustainability project that Community Development's working on, and I can tell you that everyone in that group knew the sustainability document, 50-plus pages, chapter and verse, so it was refreshing to see that so many people cared about so many things. And over time, it went from explaining how local government works for students so that they can understand how it affects their lives, to what they were asking how they could get involved. Some of the things that they participated in, going back to, we had a meeting at the police department, and one of the things that was discussed was, one of our students is non-verbal autistic and had a flyer that helped police understand how to respond to people who are autistic and may react differently to a police command. And that was something that was adopted and moved forward, and also, another thing, too, one of our students who, unfortunately, she can't be here, Priyanka Mani, what she did before the meeting, she was upset that something happened at school, and she sold cookies and babysat for a month, and donated $136 of her proceeds to the police department to help their fight with drugs. So, these students are amazing, and I'm really excited, unfortunately sad, but excited at the same time, for Meredith Keppel, who's here right now, and Priyanka Mani, who is in the process of moving out of the country. But, to Meredith, I just want to say to you, thank you for being a leader, thank you for always coming to the meetings, bringing questions, being diligent, having ideas, and you're going to go amazing places, and I can't wait until you start college in September, because they definitely know who you are, because you leave an imprint, and you're an amazing person, I'm very excited for you. So, that's all I have.
Thank you.
But, it was, it was great working with you.
Thank you. Yeah, and Meredith, we should also mention, was a TEDx Herndon speaker, so, impressive, so is well-known in the community and amongst the council members, and it is, it's a great initiative, and we're excited about what the Herndon Youth Advisory Council brings forward to us. So, with that, we're going to call Meredith down, any other members of, if any other members of HYAC are here, certainly Councilmember McKenna will call you down to the front, and actually, the entire council, if you want to come down, and we'll, and then Meredith, I'm going to call on you if you want to make... After doing a TED Talk, this should be easy, so, the floor is yours, Meredith.
So, council members, I just want to say thank you very much for the opportunity to serve on this board and council, it was incredible opportunity to meet so many young people, especially considering so many of my fellow council members are actually much younger than I, and have gotten involved at an age when I was completely self-absorbed, and for them, it's very community-focused. And I love that they are now starting to think about things in a way that took me many, many years to get to, and I'm really proud of the work that we've done and the initiatives they're moving forward with, and I really hope that they continue and that this council continues, because I think that it's important, Herndon continues to hear their teens and their youth. So, thank you very much for this opportunity.
Absolutely. Thank you, Meredith. Okay, with that, it's the comments portion of the agenda, Mr. Town Manager, do you have any comments for us this evening?
Nothing this evening, Madam Vice Mayor.
Okay. Councilmember McKenna?
Sure, just a couple of things, back on June 23, I worked with a group of people in Hunter Creek called Rebuilding Together. Their mission is to help people in communities in need by bringing together a national network affiliates, corporate individual donors, skilled trades, individuals, and associates to rebuild and refurbish homes. Just to give you some perspective, in 2017, they repaired more than 9,700 homes for over 18,000 neighbors in need, they renovated 284 nonprofit facilities, community centers, and spaces benefiting over 240,000 community members with the help of nearly 75,000 volunteers. If you want to find out more about what they do, feel free to go to rebuildingtogether.org. I'm not very mechanically inclined, so, I was just holding 60-pound pieces of wood, so anyone can really get involved, I would hammer my hand if it wasn't connected, so. The other thing, too, is while you're out walking around for Third Thursday on July 19, feel free to stop by Jimmy's Old Town Tavern, I'll be guest bartending from 7:00 to 10:00 PM, so that should be interesting as well. The reason for this exercise in futility is to benefit the Herndon Village Network, a nonprofit group whose purpose is to provide transportation, and doctors' offices, stores, restaurants, and more for the Herndon senior citizens who are 55 and older to help them live more independent lives, and I hope to see you there. If you want to find out more, go to herndonvillagennetwork.org. Thanks, that's all I got.
Great. Councilmember Cunningham?
Thank you, we don't have a meeting until August, so I wanted to point out a couple of things. You may have seen on my Facebook page that I post about food collections here in our community. In the month of August, Simple Gesture, which is also known as the CoolGreenBag.org, will be collecting food for neighbors in need, and they have a list of items you can donate, they bring you a bag, you put it out on your doorstep on Saturdays every other month, six times a year, a driver will come and pick it up, and your donation has made its way to local food banks, and the food banks, the food goes to neighbors in need. So, if you want an easy way to donate food, you don't have to find a place to donate, you just put it out in your front step, please look at CoolGreenBag.org. Their next pickup is Saturday, August 4, and it's a really great way of helping neighbors in need. Also, in August, the Red Bag Program will be starting up, which is a food program designed to collect easy-to-eat, heat-and-eat meals for area middle and high school students, and that's called Food for Neighbors. Also, in August, please look for the opening season for the next year for NextStopTheater.org. Some of our wonderful arts organizations will gear up for the fall, and I encourage you, if you haven't seen local theater, to stop by Next Stop.
Thank you. Councilmember Olem?
Thank you. Well, number one, I was thrilled when I woke up this morning and heard the news that the last four soccer players and their coach had been rescued, so that was really good news, I've been following that since it happened. The other thing is thank you to Department of Parks and Recreation for another great Fourth of July fireworks, the night was wonderful, my mom was in town, so we got to enjoy them, and it was a super extra nice finale there at the end there, so, thanks a lot for that. And, sorry to say, but Ms. Gracie has gone back to Alabama, she had to go back to see her fans there, that's my mom, in case you didn't know, but we partied the whole time she was here, because her 90th birthday was Saturday. And while we were out running amok in Herndon, we ran across two of our finest HPD officers who know Gracie and stopped to say hello, they've known her for years, so, thanks again, and just another reason why we appreciate your community service and community policing. You even know our relatives when they come back to town. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Friedrichs?
Well, I hope everybody had a happy 4th. I spent most of the last few weeks with my family, I think I've seen virtually everybody I'm related to in the past few weeks, and most of them have stayed with me, so, I'm looking forward to a little bit of rest and relaxation. Thank you.
I'll just add, the 8th Annual Herndon Town Calendar Competition Exhibit is on display at ArtSpace starting next week, so that's the, we have folks submit pictures, and then you potentially will end up on the town calendar. So, I encourage you to go check that out at ArtSpace, starting next week, and then the reception, where they announce the winners, will be Sunday, July 29, from 3:00 to 5:00 at ArtSpace, of course. Also, as Grace mentioned, we don't meet again until August, this is the summertime, so we meet twice, and in August, because of National Night Out, as always on a Tuesday worldwide, we change our schedule that week, and we will meet on Wednesday, August 8. All right, we've now come to the comments from the audience section, so, this is to invite forward any individual to address the council on any matter that is not listed as a public hearing, so this is the time to comment on items listed in our general or consent agenda. Speakers have up to three minutes, and should state their name and address for the record. A green light comes on at the beginning, and a red light will come on with your 30-second warning to start to wrap up. Individuals may not address the item on the same item unless called back, but we know that. Are there any members of the public who wanted to comment on anything tonight? Yes, Mr. McKenna? Mr. Campani? Another bill, I know. It was, yeah, it was the bill.
He doesn't even see my lips moving, either. William Campani, 1104 Iron Ridge Court, Herndon. I quote from the Town Charter, Section 31B. Candidates for town offices shall not be identified on the ballot by political affiliation. Now, I know you approve of this because you incorporate it when you recently amended the Town Charter for that section. Yes, narrowly read, it only prohibits posting a political affiliation on the ballot, but the intent of this provision is quite clear, the town election should be independent and free of political party involvement. It had been that way for decades, we voted for our fellow citizens for their presumed qualifications, not their political party. So, it was quite surprising when I discovered the Fairfax Democrat Party was charging $250 for their endorsement of the Herndon Town Council candidates. Now, why would the Democrat Party even be involved, let alone selling its endorsements for a presumed non-party election? The Libertarian Party doesn't, nor do the Green or Republican Parties. It took a century to do away with poll taxes for voters, but I guess it's now replaced by a charge on candidates. You don't pay, no support. Now, I would be disappointed if any of our council candidates would lower themselves to buying an endorsement from a political party to get elected. Citizens would hope that they run for office based on their record, character, integrity, and service to the community. So, how many of you, after writing a charter provision that our election should be nonpartisan, have paid the price for a political party endorsement? And to paraphrase St. Thomas More in A Man for All Seasons, who asked Richard Rich about his perjured purchase of the Office of Attorney General for Wales, why, Richard, it profits a man nothing to give his soul for the whole world, but for Wales? So, are you going to sell your soul for an endorsement for a lousy council seat? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there other comments? Mr. Knackman?
Good evening, Madam Vice Mayor and members of council, my name is Arthur Knackman, I live at 866 Vine Street. On July 18 of 2018, the HPRV heard the case for demolition of the building located at 770 Eldon Street, formerly known as the Ashwell Building, and the former site of car dealerships dating back to 1929. The issue was the demolition of the front facade of the rusticated brick. Years back, the facade was damaged, and the owner, Bob Ashwell, wanted to repair it using other materials, and the HPRV forced him to locate and fabricate to match the original at an expense greater than its alternative. As a private landowner, he was held to a high standard. Now, we have the current owner of the property, the Town of Herndon, who has engaged in negotiations with Comstock to redevelop the property. Many townspeople came and spoke for and against the demolition of the facade, ultimately, the town had proffered away the right of the HPRV to uphold the standards they routinely require of privately-owned land. So, the question arises and begs to be answered, why is there a double standard in the town? One for privately-owned land, and the other for municipal-owned land? I thought that our standard of government was by the people and for the people, not by the government and for the government. If a private developer seeking to redevelop this site came before the HPRV, I believe most earnestly that they would have been required to brace the front, cut the facade, and attach it to the new structure. The Town and Comstock were relieved of that requirement. This is not the first time the double standard has presented itself in the Heritage District. Prior to Great Harvest Bread Company, opening on Station Street, the Town owned the building. A new roof was needed, and instead of installing a metal roof as it required of a private owner, an asphalt shingle roof was installed, and it's currently on the building today. Town has one standard, private landowner another. Let me state for the record, I am not advocating saving any structure or element just because of its age. Many of these buildings were inexpensive to produce and provided occupancy at a minimum cost. Two of my buildings on Lynn Street are examples of this, but the fact remains, the double standard is alive and flourishing. You have a problem. You were elected to represent the people, not the government. You need to fix the problem. Fix it. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other comments from the audience? Okay, well, with that, I will call, start our public hearing, open the public hearings, and I will call the first two public hearings concurrently, so, Resolution 18G41 to authorize the reserve of fiscal year 2018 funding, and Ordinance 18019 to amend the fiscal year 2019 adopted budget. So, staff will present the reports concurrently on the two budget items, and following the public hearing, I will ask for separate motions on each. So, with that, I will open the public hearings and call on Jerry Schultz to present the staff reports.
Thank you, Vice Mayor and council members. As you have in front of you the staff report, the resolution authorizes the reserves of FY 2018 funding of capital... One for privately owned land and the other for municipal-owned land. I thought that our standard of government was by the people and for the people, not by the government and for the government. If a private developer seeking to redevelop this site came before the HPRV, I believe most earnestly that they would have been required to brace the front, cut the facade, and attach it to the new structure. The town and Comstock were relieved of that requirement. This is not the first time the double standard has presented itself in the Heritage District. Prior to Great Harvest Bread Company, opening on Station Street, the town owned, owned the building. A new roof was needed, and instead of installing a metal roof as it required of a private owner, an asphalt shingle roof was installed, and it's currently on the building today. Town has one standard, a private landowner another. Let me state for the record, I am not advocating saving any structure or element just because of its age. Many of these buildings were inexpensive to produce and provided occupancy at a minimum cost. Two of my buildings on Lynn Street are examples of this, but the fact remains, the double standard is alive and flourishing. You have a problem. You were elected to represent the people, not the government. You need to fix the problem. Fix it. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other comments from the audience?
Okay, well, with that, I will call, um, start our public hearing, open the public hearings, and I will call the first two public hearings concurrently, so, um, Resolution 18G41 to authorize the reserve of fiscal year 2018 funding, and Ordinance 18019 to amend, uh, the fiscal year 2019 adopted budget. So staff will present, um, the reports concurrently on the two, uh, budget items, and following the public hearing, I will ask for separate motions on each. So with that, I will open the public hearings and call on Jerry Schultz to present the
Uh, thank you, Vice Mayor and, uh, council members. As you have in front of you the, the staff report, the resolution authorizes the reserves of FY 2018 funding of capital, ongoing, new, or expanded projects, and the outstanding encumbrances as of June 30th, 2018. The, uh, related ordinance is to consider amending the FY 19 adopted budget by recognizing the outstanding encumbrances and authorize the reserve amounts for the FY 18 as appropriated amounts for FY 19. This practice has, um, been customary in the town. Every fiscal year, we, we go through this process. Um, the attached staff reports list the recommendation, recommended reserves displayed by category and by fund. The new requests are on Schedule I. The, um, minor capital and ongoing requests are on Schedule II. And the capital projects, uh, fund requests are on Schedule III. If there are any questions on Schedules I, II, or III, I could, uh, take those, uh, questions at this point in time.
Sure. Are there questions of council? Okay.
All right. Thank you.
More to proceed, or is that it?
That's it.
Okay. Very good. I know we obviously dug into this a little more last week. All right, well, given that this is a public hearing, um, so we're good for now, and I'll call you back up then.
All right.
Um, I will, uh, call on comments from the audience. Are there any, anyone in the audience want to speak on, um, either of these budget items? Or separately? I don't know if I have comments at all, so maybe it won't matter. Okay, so seeing none, um, I will close the public hearing and move to council level for discussion and action. Councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. I'll move Resolution 18G41.
I'll second.
Okay. That motion made by Councilmember Cunningham, seconded by Councilmember McKenna. Discussion on the motion. Councilmember Cunningham.
Just want to thank staff once again, um, for all their hard work in creating another very tight budget, um, that really puts every penny of taxpayer money to good use.
Thank you. Mr. McKenna.
Yeah, I want to reiterate that. We had a really good work session last week, and I can say from, I was on the budget process last year to this year, um, you know, as far as capital projects and things like that not being lost into the ether, uh, having more focus, and obviously, the, the numbers encumbered into the, the sheet, um, you know, it's, it's great that, um, what you're doing and, and the focus is really good, and I'm very proud of this, so, nice job. I'm very proud of that.
Excellent. Thank you. Other comments of council? Councilmember Friedrichs?
So, uh, uh, this is a very well-thought-out, um, end-of-year adjustment. Um, it, do we have it available for the public to see, or?
Yeah, 'cause they have the.
Just in the packet?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
And online.
All right.
Yep. Absolutely.
Madam Vice Mayor. It's on Granicus as well, so it's online. It's in, it's in the packets online as well.
Yep. I'm sorry, I just thought you meant for the public, but yeah.
Yeah, I'm just used to seeing it presented.
Oh, yeah. Um, other comments of council? Okay, well, with that, so, again, this is just the motion on Resolution 18G41, um, regarding fiscal year 18, um, and we have a motion to approve made by Councilmember Cunningham, seconded by Councilmember, um, McKenna. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Those opposed? And that motion carries. All right, so, given that we already had the, um, information from Jerry on both, we will also, there, no further commentary on fiscal year 19, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Just want to make sure. Thank you. Um, so then we also have a motion, do we have a motion on Ordinance 18-019?
I move.
I'll second.
Is there discussion on the motion? Okay. Ms. Olam?
Yes, uh, just, if you're checking out your, uh, agenda items in the attachments, they're talking about the general fund, water sewer, Chestnut Grove, and the golf course fund. So check it out if you want more details.
Thank you for that. Other comments? Okay, given that this action, this action requires, is to allocate funds, so it does require a majority of council, which is four, um, and it will require a roll call vote, so I will call the question and ask the clerk to call the roll. All those in favor? And I'll call on you, yeah, sorry.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Vice Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Yes.
Councilmember Friedrichs?
Yes.
Councilmember McKenna?
Yes.
Councilmember Olam?
And that motion carries. I know, there's only five of us. I keep, there you go, and we're done. Um, okay, and that motion carries, so thank you for that. Um, and finally, we have one last, uh, public hearing item tonight, Ordinance 18-020 to consider ZODA 1801, which is to amend and, um, reenact Chapter 78 zoning to allow the ARB and HPRB to establish requirements for staff to permit administrative approvals of certain signs, and to remove the 90-day limit for certain temporary signs on single-family properties. Um, I have, we, uh, we have received comments on this item, which are entered into the record, um, and I will open the public hearing and recognize Dave Stromberg for the staff
Good evening, Vice Mayor Baker and Members of Council.
Good evening.
So as stated, tonight we have ZODA 18-01, which is an amendment to Article 14 of the zoning ordinance which regulates signs. There are two components of this ordinance amendment. The first is a change which establishes the regulatory framework to allow for the administrative review of sign applications. Currently, most signs installed in the town are required to be reviewed by the HPRB or the ARB, depending on whether or not the property is located in the historic district or outside of the historic district. The only exception are signs that are already part of an approved master sign plan. Staff is in the process of developing a set of uniformed design standards for signs throughout the town, and these standards will be presented to the HPRB and the ARB for their review and approval. Once the board adopts those standards, then the staff will begin to be able to administratively reviewing these sign license applications. So an adoption of this amendment will ensure consistent, high-quality design of signs throughout the town, while at the same time encouraging economic development by reducing the amount of time required to obtain a sign license. And this portion of the amendment was a recommendation of the Economic Development Advisory Council. So the other component of this ordinance is to eliminate the existing 90-day maximum time duration for temporary signs on single-family residential properties. The 90-day time limitation is a bit problematic from an enforcement standpoint, because after 90 days, someone could remove a sign and then put it up again for another 90 days, um, and then they would be fully compliant with the ordinance. So staff doesn't believe by the removal of this 90-day language will really have much of an impact compared to what you currently see around the town. When this ordinance amendment was presented to the Planning Commission in June, they expressed some concern that signs could be allowed to proliferate on single-family residential properties about some level of appropriate regulation. Under the current standards, signs are limited to 12 square feet in area. There is no limitation to the number of signs that you could have of temporary signs. There was one speaker at the Planning Commission public hearing who did support removal of the 90-day language requirement, and the Planning Commission did make a recommendation that ZODA 1801 be adopted, but with the exception of Section 78, 140.5, N5, which is that section that's regulating signs, and that it should, that section should be brought back before the commission for further review and discussion. So your package contains both, uh, samples of the language as originally proposed, and then the other section as recommended by the Planning Commission.
Excellent. Are there questions of council? All right, well, then I will call on comments from the audience. Does anyone want to, this is a public hearing item, so again, state your name and address for the record. You have up to three minutes. Is there any comments from the audience? This is it. The mayor gave me an easy night, I tell ya. Um, okay, well, with that, I'm going to close the public hearing and move to council for discussion and action. Ms. Olam.
I move approval. Excuse me, I move approval of 18-0-20 with changes recommended by the Planning Commission.
I second that.
And just to clarify then, so you're, the, to approve zoning ordinance, um, 18-01 as proposed and presented by the Planning Commission, that exactly, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Correct. Excellent. Um, discussion on the motion. Ms. Olam.
As you were discussing about the 90-day limit on signs, also, every time you go out and mow your grass in the summer, you, I don't know about you, but I'm going to pick the sign up and move it, so I don't know how on earth, uh, any staff could ever try to keep up with people moving those signs in the summer if they're on the lawn, and I think this was a, a good idea to go ahead and eliminate that. If they do become a problem with people putting 20/30 in their yard, I'm sure we'll address that in the future.
And, yep, Mr. McKenna?
I'm in agreement with, uh, Councilwoman Olam. Um, and I also, uh, from the last meeting until now, I wanted to get some more perspective on this, and, um, Friday Night Live is always a good place to do that, and also Walking the Trail, and, um, I definitely became a lot more aware of this, uh, topic, and I'm glad that, uh, Councilwoman Olam, uh, did it with the, the Planning Commission proposal, because I do think that, um, you know, you look at things like that, we can get a little bit crazy in regards to certain, um, the, the way that we govern, and I, I think this is a, a, a better way to do it, so I'm, I'm all for it as well.
Excellent. Any other comments? Ms. Friedrichs?
Um, I agree with both my, uh, fellow council members. Uh, it, if it did become a problem, I know we could look into it, but right now, we're not having a problem, and HOAs can deal with a lot of this, and the rest of us can talk to our neighbors.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I would just add, I think, I think the changes to the, the, um, business section as well is really important, that we're, again, we really want to be a town that's easy and, to do business with and to work with, and is accommodating, and I think we've added some changes there that also, uh, improve that. So with that, I will call the question. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Those opposed? And that motion carries. So that takes us to the general item, and, um, what we've, what many of us have, are excited about tonight is, um, Resolution 18G42 to appoint Richard B. Kaufman as a member of the Herndon Town Council. Um, I have received comments on this item, which I've entered into the record, um, and I also want to call on Councilmember McKenna to, um, read some comments.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Um, I, I think this is important, um, because we did receive, uh, commentary and, um, in speaking with people. I just want to read, uh, one particular email that, um, came across our desk, and, um, it states, uh, from, it says, "Richard Kaufman has been a mainstay of the town and it's, uh, as its attorney, and his forthright unbiased consideration of issue as town attorney without personal political overtone makes him an ideal selection for this short-term appointment of about five months. The silly season will soon be on the town again, and those with political agendas can follow the political process to convince voters that those ideas are best." And that was by William Terrell, who was a town councilman here from 1991, 1990 to 92, 94 to 2002, and 2006 to 2012. But, yeah, so, just, that's.
Excellent. Thank you. And Councilmember Cunningham?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd also like to take a moment to read comments we received from Mike O'Reilly, a former mayor, uh, here in the town of Herndon, um, that we received and were also entered into the record. And, uh, what's notable about this is that, um, while Bill Terrell and Mike O'Reilly served, um, at the same time on the Herndon Town Council, they rarely agreed on much, but yet, we find common ground here. So, "Mayor and Members of Council, I note that one of the general items on the agenda this evening is the appointment of Richard B. Kaufman to serve the remainder of Jeff Davidson's term. I can't think of a better choice and hold hardly support the appointment. I had the privilege to serve with Mr. Kaufman for many years and know him to be a sincere, thorough, and intelligent public servant. His stellar, stellar, stellar reputation with other municipalities and in the legal community served him and the town very well, and will serve us well the remainder of this year. To my knowledge, there is no requirement that an unsuccessful candidate be selected to fill this seat. In fact, in 2001, the council selected former mayor Rick Foson to fill the council seat vacated by Carol Bruce, when Tom Russ became delegate and Carol became mayor. In sum, I have known Richard B. Kaufman personally and professionally since he moved to the town and became the town attorney, and strongly support his appointment to the town council." Michael O'Reilly.
Excellent. Thank you for that additional commentary, and as I said, we did receive other comments that have been entered into the record. Um, so, instead of calling on a motion, I'm just going to make a motion to, uh, for Resolution 18G42 to appoint Richard B. Kaufman as a member of council.
Second.
And we'll have, it's going to be an overwhelming second, but we'll have Councilmember Olam second that. Is there discussion or comments on the motion? Councilmember Olam?
I don't remember exactly what year I met Mr. Kaufman, uh, when he came here as our attorney, but I had gotten some legislation through in Richmond in 1996 with the assistance of Lieutenant Governor Don Byer. Uh, my late husband had disappeared in South America, and we had to do, um, I had to get something passed so he could be declared presumed dead. And Richard knew about this. He was working in Blacksburg when I got that done, but he, he's not just a town attorney that worked here in Herndon and in Blacksburg, but he kept up with all the legislation going through Richmond, and it's amazing, uh, at the detail, the attention to detail, uh, Mr. Kaufman has always passed on his job. So I know he's going to do an excellent job helping us make it through the end of this term. And thank you for, for taking the time, and, uh, tells you, Georgina, we appreciate her, um, letting you come back to us for a little while as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Ms. Friedrichs?
I second and third, uh, what everybody has said. My experience with Richard has not been as a colleague, but, um, uh, I have always experienced him to be kind, to be even-handed, to be ethical, and, um, respect him very much, and I'm grateful that he said yes.
Thank you. Other comments? Ms. Cunningham?
Thank you. Had the pleasure of working professionally with Mr. Kaufman for the eight and a half years I've been on council, and for almost 12 years prior to that as president of the Council for the Arts of Herndon, and I've always known Richard to have the town's best interest at heart at all times. The town doesn't feel quite complete without seeing you walk from your house down to Town Hall. Um, you're a neighbor of mine, so I always know what time it is if I see Richard, that means I'm late. So it's wonderful that you are willing to put your multitude of talent and perspective back to use for the town's residents, and we look forward to welcoming you up here very soon.
Thank you. Mr. McKenna?
Although I did not have the pleasure of working with you in a council capacity as council to the council, um, I can tell you that, uh, I spoke with other council members, uh, council alumni in regards to, um, your appointment. I, I thought it was important because I wanted to get perspective in regards to, you know, tradition and precedent. And I can tell you that, uh, based on my conversations, I have no problems with any of those things, uh, but more importantly, you've been a steward of this town for, from 1994 to 2015, 21 years. You've seen a lot of things come and go. You have perspective that many people just don't have, and everyone said the same thing. You care, you're polite, and you're nice. And the other thing that's, I think, important as well, is that, um, the council vacancy was not done by, um, a resignation. It was done, uh, it was lack of free will. He was, uh, a councilman passed away. And in my mind, it mattered to me that we embody, um, the kind of person that Jeff was. And Jeff was judicious, he was diligent, and he was thoughtful. And I think that was important in regards to the embodiment of who should be on this council. I could think of no other person besides you, so thank you.
Thank you for that. Um, with that, I want to add just a little bit more information, because this, this really is a, is a relatively unprecedented event, because a lot of folks asked us about precedence and how do we usually do this. From our research, it's happened three times in 100 years, right? Once, one other time because of a death in 1918, I believe, and two other times in more recent history because of resignations. So this is a, a pretty unusual situation to have to fill a vacant council seat. Um, if you look within the Town Charter, I'm just going to read that, in Section 3.2 of our Charter for the Town of Herndon, um, in 1968 as amended, provides that vacancies on the council shall be filled for unexpired portion of the term by a majority vote of the remaining members of council. And that, quote, "The person to fill the unexpired term of council member must be a qualified voter of the town, and it is incumbent upon the Herndon Town Council to fill such vacancies that occur." So that's essentially what we were told by the Charter, is that if it happens, you need to fill it with a. So that's essentially what we were told by the charter is that if it happens, you need to fill it with a voter, right? Like someone that, of course, would be eligible to both vote and run. And of course, that you were required to fill that vacancy. So even if it happened with a short period of time, and in this case, you know, we have less than a year since Jeff's passing. The other thing I think folks asked about was the process, and I do want to speak on that. There was a closed meeting to discuss the who should fill that seat. The reason for that, it's just like any other job interview or as we staff boards and commissions, those are also under closed meetings. Because no one wants to hear they were the second on the list, right? So it was important that there is some confidentiality to that conversation. I will tell you, though, it was a unanimous decision within that room that Richard Kaufman was the absolute best choice. And we all hoped he would accept. We had other folks on the list if he didn't. And we had, of course, a plan and how we wanted to address that. But our goal was to, with the short period of time, with the immense amount of work and things we have in front of us over the next six months. It was most important to us to, again, I think Mr. Councilmember McKenna said it well, to embody Jeff Davidson. Since this is, we are filling Jeff's seat and there's significance to that. And also to make sure that the person could easily get up to speed. This is not an easy role to take on. And to make sure that we were, we didn't miss, that we were able to execute on the things we needed to. And given that Richard has sat in this seat for, you know, twenty-one years, I believe, he sat at this dais and of course, had worked for other towns. Again, he was absolutely the best, most logical choice. And we were just hoping in that meeting that he would say yes. And so we're very glad that you did. With that, I will, this, we actually, we have to do this by roll call too, which I think is awesome. But anyway, it's not even for, you know, because this is a big deal. So I will call the question and ask the clerk to call the roll.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Vice Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Yes.
Councilmember Friedrichs? Councilmember McKenna?
Yes.
Councilmember Olem?
Yes.
And that, of course, passes. So with that, I would like to invite forward Vicky Wellerhouse, who's here. So she is our town clerk to give the oath of office. And myself and our current town attorney, Lisa Yates, and the town manager will also witness the signing of the oath. And after that, I will call down the rest of council for a picture.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Richard B. Kaufman.
I, Richard B. Kaufman.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge all the duties.
Discharge all the duties.
Incumbent upon me.
Incumbent upon me.
As a member.
As a member.
Of the Herndon Town Council.
Of the Herndon Town Council.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you. Now we're going to do the signing. And while the council's coming down for the photo op, just for the record, a copy of this will be filed with the circuit court tomorrow.
Vice Mayor Baker, members of town council. I value this appointment and I'm aware of the serious and important work of this town council. I plan to serve the citizens, the residents, and the businesses of this town with energy, enthusiasm, and thought, and all that I can give to that. I plan to listen to the citizens, to the residents, and to the businesses, the mayor and town council, the town staff. And I plan to make policy decisions based on all the information provided. Generally, my policy goals will be to promote the utility and the benefit of the municipal corporation underlying the town of Herndon within and part of Fairfax County. For the benefit of the citizens, the residents, and the businesses which the mayor and town council serve. I thank the mayor, vice mayor, and town council for considering me and for the appointment to this office of provisional town council member.
Thank you, Mr. Kaufman. It's a pleasure. So Mr. Kaufman's term essentially starts this evening, and he will be at the first work session in August. So next up is Resolution eighteen dash G forty-three to initiate consideration of a comprehensive plan amendment to update land use policy and the land use plan map for the Elden Street corridor. So I've received comments on this item, which are entered into the record. And I'm going to recognize Dana Hyberg for preliminary comment. Oh, sorry, I'm going to recognize Lisa. Do you want to speak first? Sorry, Lisa Gilloran for preliminary comment. And then Dana. Sorry.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you.
I appreciate that. Unfortunately, I was not able to attend the work session last week. But I understand some questions came up regarding the use of the number, the actual CPA eighteen oh one. During the Planning Commission hearing of July second. When comments were taken concerning this particular comprehensive plan amendment that we're hoping that you will initiate this evening. I would say that the use of the number in the advertisement was an unintended administrative action. Basically, staff was looking for a way to incorporate a request for continued informal comments. We had had a planning, general planning meeting, not a public hearing, but a planning meeting where we had invited the general public to come out and speak to this. As we were doing our background work and research and as the Planning Commission was doing their research. And we then wanted to be able to continue to have that ability to hear comment. And continue to work on the background of this matter. When we ran the advertisement, it was to allow for informal public comment. But we were doing it during a formal process. And the, the number is given early on in the process as a tracking number in-house. And we ended up putting it in the ad, probably shouldn't have. And we apologize for any confusion that may have caused people. But it was an initial public input that we were requesting. It was not a formal public hearing on this matter. That, of course, will occur after this item is initiated by the council. And be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any questions on that particular comment? Thank you for clarifying that. I know there was, given that this is an initiating, to initiate consideration of sending it to the Planning Commission, I know there was some confusion with that. So thanks for that clarification. Sounds like more of an administrative kind of clerical challenge. And now I will call on Dana Hyberg for the staff report.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. So, South Eldon Street. I think you all are familiar with the area that we're looking at. It is at the southwestern part of the town. And specifically, it runs from the south town boundary. Near the coals that you can see at the southern end of this aerial photograph. And it runs northward along Eldon Street, continuing up to the Sterling Road area. And picks up quite a number of properties, both lots of retail and services and also several office properties and several residential properties, as you can see on this, with the labels here. We have a, we have a maximum density typical in the commercial areas of a point three to a point five FAR. And this area was developed several decades ago, essentially. And, and so the uses have evolved. Some are newer and some are older. Always good to look at the land use plan of the adjacent jurisdictions. So we just have a quick slide. When I look at Fairfax County, they have a comprehensive plan. Gives you, this slide gives you an idea of the proximity of the Route twenty-eight Metro rail station. Shows a quarter mile and half mile radius, which are somewhat west of our study area. And as you can see, they're, they're outside of the town boundary. But certainly within, if you went out to, say, a larger one mile radius, you would start to pick up a good bit of this, of our study area. The zoning map designations that are in effect today within this corridor are typically your commercial services is the predominant category along the corridor. And then, of course, we have commercial office for several of the office buildings. We have some residential multifamily. South of the study area, we have the PDW there in blue, which should be the planned development world gate. So that's the flavor of the existing zoning. At the southern end of the corridor, we do have a residential property that's curiously zoned commercial office. That's the Dulles Fan Meter Apartments. I believe it was zoned in the seventies. The land use map designations that are in effect today are shown on this slide. This is our comprehensive plan. It was adopted in two thousand and eight. We created the business corridor, kind of retail and services type of category. Recognized a lot of existing conditions on both the East Eldon and on this portion of Eldon Street. So that's the, kind of the pink color there is the business corridor. Certainly, we have adaptive area on a couple of properties at the southern end of the corridor there. We have the adaptive area for the Dulles Fan Meter Apartments. So that's been in place since two thousand and eight. But, and, and the adaptive area encourages redevelopment and change. But as you know, nothing has happened on that property. Although we've had that designation on there now for approaching a decade. And then also up at the, towards the northern end of the corridor, at the Parkdale Apartments property, we, we have the orange color, which is adaptive area dash residential, which means redevelopment's encouraged, but only to some form of residential use. And again, that, that's been in place since two thousand and eight as well, but we haven't seen redevelopment. And other features on the comprehensive plan, of course, you have some surrounding low-density residential areas. You have the school sites, park site there nearby. Couple of park sites near to the study area, actually, in the green there, of course. And also I mentioned the Finnmark property, which is, and the, the blue color is the office parks and flexible space category. That is kind of a singular property, having that, that land use designation. Most of our grouping of, of large grouping of properties that have that category are, are over all in the Spring Street corridor. So again, just recapping, we have adaptive areas where the town is flexible and encourages change. And then we have adaptive areas dash residential where it's encouraging change and redevelopment, but to some form of residential use. And again, the business corridor is a dynamic mix of retail services, hotel, medical, and professional offices. And office parks and flexible space is where predominant use is office space in a campus environment. So the plan amendment proposes that some land within these designations become eligible for either adaptive area or adaptive area dash residential or both. And this is the, the core proposal for land use. And basically, it's, it's a concept of, first off, placing the adaptive area designation throughout the corridor. With four tiers, so encouraging a lot of flexibility and the possibility of, of mixed use and different things happening in a commercial corridor, in what is today just a commercial corridor. So it's really an approach that has a graduation. The northern half, I would say, is tier one. It's, it's a very moderate increase in density. You may see some evolutionary change over time, but it's not the kind of FAR that's really going to incentivize, be a, be a large and powerful incentive to redevelopment. And then we also have the piece at the very north end that is, is not in either, any of these tiers. The southern half, which would be tier two, three, and four, we graduate to some higher FARs, floor area ratios that are recommended. So some higher density. And then, and again, of course, mixed use. And so tier three is at the one point oh FAR. Tier four, which would be the giant Eldon Street Marketplace property, as well as an additional property across the street at the corner of Herndon Parkway. That's in a, in a, in that tier four, the highest. And then tier two is where we don't have Eldon Street frontage. We do have some frontage on Herndon Parkway, but, but we're at the type of density, point eight five. That could, for instance, support an urban townhouse type of configuration. This is an additional aerial photo to, to illustrate the tiers again. With the, the higher density being the southern half and so forth. So we're recommending approval of the resolution so that the item can be formally referred to the Planning Commission for review, public hearing. And then they would, they would make a recommendation to town council. It could possibly be recommended by the Planning Commission at their August public hearing. If so, council would consider this in September. I think it's probably more likely that Commission would continue it at their August hearing. We have a number of technical studies we're working on. We want to consider the full range of impacts. We have traffic study underway. We have just received Fairfax County Public Schools extensive comment letter, Fairfax County Park Authority comment letter is in. Let's see, Public Schools, Park Authority, and then Herndon Parks and Rec comments are in as well. So, we have a number of things that we'll be working with the Commission on to sort of ingest. They have their work session coming up here, actually, that will be the 16th of July, and then their public hearing in first Monday in August. So, that is where we stand. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there questions of council? Yes, Ms. Friedrichs.
Currently, these areas are zoned at .3 and .5, and can you give me, just to put it all in perspective, how much more would, say, tier four be developed than it is now? What would it be comparable to that's already been built in Herndon, what's got that kind of FAR?
I think at a 1.2 FAR, you could possibly see a configuration with retail on a ground floor, three to four stories of residential above, structured parking. I would say that's the ballpark. You might want to go amplify a little bit on that.
I'm not certain that you would be able to get up to four stories. I think you could definitely do three. Of course, it's going to depend on how you arrange that on the site.
Right.
To give you just a visual idea, as you probably know, but others in the audience may not, a one FAR means that if you had a square piece of property, a one FAR without other zoning requirements and restrictions means that the same amount of floor area, building floor area, is allowed as there is land area. So, if it were a one-story building, you could have it cover the entire site. Now, of course, that's not what happens. People need parking and other things, so it may be a two-story building covering half the site or so. So, that gives you a little bit of an idea of what a one FAR is. So, when you go down below that, of course, that means that it's a lower amount of finished floor area in the building than you have land area. I'm not certain that I can point to a, something that's built at a 1.2 FAR in the town. Now, the Stanley Martin development that has been approved, that's under construction today, that's a .7 FAR. So, that will give you an idea of the, closer to the lower range of the tiers in this.
So, it could be a significant change in density and traffic and whatnot?
Well.
Sorry, it could be a significant change in density, I said. I mean, Stanley Martin is two-story, one...
It's two over twos, four stories.
So, it's four, yeah.
Right. But again, that's going to depend a lot on the form, and as we've heard from some of the speakers at the first public information session that we had, there has already been raised, you know, what form are you going to allow? And there was some interest in having what would be considered a more urban form. That doesn't mean necessarily dense, but to move the buildings up towards the street and to have parking garages, so you don't have a sea of parking in front of the building. So, it would be some additional density, probably a very different form, not so much your 1960s arterial, you know, suburban front format. But yes, there would be some additional density. Of course, when you get to the one and the 1.2, that's where you see the most increase in density. I would like to add one thing to what Dana said. I was speaking late today with the town attorney, and at this point, the, as the director in planning, I'm thinking that we'll probably do another informal session with the Planning Commission in August rather than going to the formal session, and the reason for that is that the work session this month is unusual. The Planning Commission work session is unusual in that it occurs prior to the advertisement dates, and since we won't have that advertisement out prior to the work session, we'll keep with the informal and then go to formal in September at Planning Commission.
Thank you. Other questions of council? Thank you for that. Okay, yeah, because again, this is, there's certainly going to be a lot more, I think, just to, just reiterate, because I think it's an important comment. This is a big section of the town, right? It's an important section of the town. Really, all we do tonight is officially allow the Planning Commission to look at it, right? And they'll have at least, it sounds like at least a couple months, right, between August and then again in September, at least, and then they can decide if it's ready at that point to send back to council, or potentially, they can have longer. So, there'll be lots of opportunity for additional comments, questions, and what's proposed in here is, I'd say, staff suggestions and sort of a framework, but again, that's where council and public, or Planning Commission and public comment will certainly be factored in, and potentially, this will look different in October, November, December, whenever it comes back to council. So, watch this, keep looking for that, but that's where this is at tonight. So, again, just to move it to Planning Commission. With that, is there a motion to approve Resolution 18?
Madam Vice Chair, I move on Resolution 18-G43.
Second.
Okay. Councilmember McKenna, seconded by Councilmember Friedrichs. Discussion on the motion?
Yes.
Yes. Councilmember McKenna.
Yeah, so, I think the best analogy for this in regards to how, at least in my mind of processing, to make it, I guess, salient, is that when I was going to college, I was on scholarship. My mom and dad were concerned about being able to afford it, but they opened up a home equity line. They never used it, but they opened it so that they had it. All this, you know, based on this, this is just opening up the lines to talk about density and things of that nature, and I'm for multiple reasons. One of them being is we do have two apartment complexes there that are, you know, of lower-income people, and one of the things when you do, when you raise density, you can also invite in things like affordable housing and things of that nature. It's been done in Alexandria. If you look at the Route 1 corridor, not on the other side of the bridge of Potomac, but closer to the Potomac Yards area, there is a fire station there, and there's apartments above that, and you would, and it blends in with everything else, but you would never know that that, for example, is affordable housing. So, just as an example, this is just a way for things to open up and to have discussions. It is by no means a etched-in-stone in regards to what's being happening, but it does open conversations in regards to where we should bring things, and I do thank the Planning Commission and also staff on this. I do think this is a smart way to approach things, and looking at certain sectors of the town, looking at pragmatically where things are going in the future, are we having the right dials in regards to residential versus commercial? Because, you know, economies go up and economies go down, and we have to worry about supporting everything and having a tax base that can support that. So, I am enthusiastically for this for those reasons, and of course, be watching it like a hawk. Thanks.
Thank you. Other comments? Councilmember Friedrichs.
So, I spent yesterday evening discussing the redoing of the bike paths and the road on South Eldon Street. So, this is very exciting to me because we're trying to figure out where, you know, where there are entrances and exits, and where there'll be medians and so forth. So, that's a part of the town that I think has been somewhat neglected for a while, and the fact that we're looking at it and revitalizing it is going to make the entire town do better. So, like Councilmember McKenna, I support this.
Great. Other, yeah, Councilmember Olem?
Yeah, I think I've got it on. Okay, yes, I'm totally in support of sending this to the Planning Commission to get the ball rolling on the redevelopment recommendations, and I do want us to keep in mind, and the Planning Commission, that over 350 units of affordable-type housing, people that work in the service industry, I know people that work at quite a few of our local stores, they walk to work, they don't even own cars, a lot of them, and they need affordable places that are in close proximity to where they work and so forth. And with the Giant leaving us, this is all extremely timely because there's no telling what's going to happen with that building. I've noticed that they're getting their new place on the other side of the toll road ready for them to move in in November. So, totally support this and keeping an eye out and making sure that we're looking after the individuals that live in those affordable apartments in the area.
Yes, Councilmember Cunningham.
I think it's a great time for us to be looking at this part of the town. We have not spent as much time looking at it, but with the advent of Metro, and more importantly, the advent of the development that's going on around Herndon, this is a unique opportunity for us to revitalize that area, and as mentioned, to preserve some of the affordable housing. Just south of our border, once you cross under the toll road at Araber Center, that development has already been approved. It's already in construction, and four-level townhouses starting in the 500s and 600s will be going up right at south of the town. That will put immense pressure on the landowners just north of that facility, which is our section under consideration of this initiating ordinance. Right now, 154 level townhouses from a half million dollars are just less than half a mile from the area that we're contemplating. So, this is our best opportunity for looking at a comprehensive redevelopment that will preserve the character of the town and also preserve our ability to provide affordable housing for some of our town residents. So, I'm in support of this, and I look forward to seeing what the Planning Commission comes back to us with.
Thank you. So, with that, I will call the question. This motion was made by Councilmember McKenna and seconded by Councilmember Friedrichs. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion carries. So, this brings us to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, which includes items 13 to 17?
I'll second.
So, that's made by Councilmember Olem, seconded by Councilmember McKenna. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion carries.
Madam Vice Mayor, seeing no other business, I move we adjourn.
I'll second.
Excellent. Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And we stand adjourned at 8:23. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you.